The Las Cruces Public School Board Regular Meeting Tuesday, August 19th, 2016.
No, 14.
14.
Don't move us that fast.
You're ahead of yourself.
I am. Usually I'm behind, so that makes a change. Can we have roll call, please?
Señora Flores.
Here.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
I'm here.
I'm here.
And you're there. We're all here.
We have a quorum and a hundred percent attendance. Please rise for this pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the June 26, 2014 Regular Meeting Minutes, July 2nd, Board Retreat Minutes, and August 12 Special Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the minutes?
I will abstain. I was absent for the work sessions.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstention noted. The minutes are approved. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the agenda?
I'm going to ask that in the consent agenda that the vendor payments be separated out so that we can vote separately.
Okay, and which item is that?
It's under the consent agenda, and it is item 5A3.
Okay, I will note that. Any other discussion from the board?
We'll just talk about it. So did we make the motion yet? As amended?
So I move that we accept the consent agenda with the vendor payments separated.
But we are approving the regular agenda.
Well, I've heard the agenda, and then we'll...
Yes.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
So she wants to move that to the regular agenda so we can talk.
Correct.
Okay. I'll second that emotion.
So it's been moved and seconded that an amended agenda be approved. Do I hear approval?
Aye.
All approve? Aye?
Aye.
I say aye. The agenda is approved with the removal of the vendor payments.
Madam President, just for clarification, Mr. Dean will have those prepared, so we will present those one by one, and I understand from the motion that you would like to vote on each of those separately, correct?
It's just the vendor payment.
Just the vendor payment, correct.
Just the vendor payment I want to vote separately.
Then we also need to approve the consent agenda items. There are many of those, and I'll list those for us. Roman number 5A1, approval of bids. 5A2, approval of property dispositions. 5A3, approval of vendor payments was moved off of this list. 5A4, approval of budget adjustments. 5B1, approval of student out-of-state travel. 5C1, approval of LCPS Nutrition Services and Doñana County Head Start Agreement for the school year 2014-15. 5C2, approval of LCPS Nutrition Services and La Academia de la Suerte Agreement for school year 2014-15. 5C3, approval of LCPS Nutrition Services and NMSU School for Young Children Agreement for school year 2014-15. 5C4, approval of LCPS Nutrition Services and Holy Cross Agreement for school year 2014-15. 5C5, approval of ancillary agreement for school year 2014-15. 5C6, approval of fleet service agreement for school year 2014-15. And 6A1, adoption of 2014-15 Open Meetings Act Resolution. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda items are approved. This evening, Dr. Sanchez is going to act as the superintendent, and it goes to him for recognitions. Teacher of the Year.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. At this time, the Teacher of the Year for Las Cruces Public Schools is indeed selected by the entire district. To begin, anyone in the community may nominate a teacher. A committee of district volunteers from every level selects and interviews the finalists. We are now going to introduce to you the 2015 finalists. Our finalist is Melly Locke. Is Melly present? Melly, would you please come forward while I read a short statement about you. Melly has been with the district since 1999, first as a substitute, then as the Highland Librarian, and since 2006 as a science teacher at Sierra Middle School. Melly is active in science activities, organizations, the National Education Association, and professional development. In her essay, Melly explained, "I want my students to become more scientifically literate." As a science magnet teacher with the benefit of longer class periods, engaged learning allows the classroom to expand outside the perimeter of the school through such activities as monthly field trips, labs, speakers, projects, and the use of technology. Hopefully, this will enable my students to connect the thinking strategies and scientific concepts used this year in seventh grade science to lifelong problem-solving skills and real-world situations." Melly Locke, we're proud of you. Our second runner-up is Anne Marie Gardner. For the last 14 years, Anne Marie Gardner has taught science at Mayfield High School. She impressed the committee with her wide range of activities from Spaceport Advisory Board to the National Education Association to the school tech team, with lots of professional development all throughout the years. Anne Marie's essay describes the variety of educational technology use she uses in her class and concludes, "You see, all of these things in combination create a networked, digital, public space where my students can step out of their comfort zone and shine, where the learning process they participate in is both guided and self-determined, where the virtual becomes manifest, and each of them rediscovers the wonders of the natural world they inhabit." How lucky our students are to have you. Thank you. Congratulations, Anne Marie. The first runner-up is Rachel Knight. Ms. Rachel, in attendance. Rachel, while waiting for the students to return from lunch to announce that their teacher was a finalist for Teacher of the Year, the committee facilitator passed the time by watching a baby chick hatch. As you might suspect, Rachel Knight is the agriculture teacher and FFA sponsor at Centennial High School. This is Rachel's eighth year with LCPS. She explains her classroom as follows. "My classroom is set up so that students sit in teams, and each student has a specific task within the team that allows them to contribute to the learning of all students. I want my students to be formulating their own questions about what they are learning, and then work together to collect evidence and create explanations. Finally, the students need to learn how to effectively communicate their results. While the students are involved in directing their own learning, I spend most of my time traveling around the classroom, observing students, answering questions, and providing feedback. What a wonderful teacher
Notice they're all women.
Duly noted, Madam President. The 2015 Teacher of the Year is Mindy Tapia. Mindy is in her 10th year with LCPS, the last five as a first-grade teacher at East Picacho Elementary. The committee was impressed by the depth of her experience. As you learned earlier, she is a national board teacher. She was introduced earlier this year, but she also is a member of the National Education Association, a frequent grant recipient, and a presenter. Each candidate was required to prepare the first five minutes of a speech to a community group and present that to the selection committee. Mindy chose to share a speech designed to recruit community members as classroom volunteers. By the end of that selection committee meeting, I think all of the committee members wanted to sign up as a volunteer in your school.
You're all welcome.
Mindy, we are very, very proud of you. The LCPS community shares in your achievement Let's give them another round of applause. Madam President, members of the board, I'd also like to thank Dr. Thea Hand for coordinating and putting all of this together. I know it's a lot of work, Dr. Hand, and we really appreciate your efforts in this area. Madam President, with that, we can move to the next agenda item, public input.
Yes, and I am sitting here with no cards telling me there is public input. So with no cards, am I to assume there is no public input? Any people back there at the back table, do you see any cards?
Tell her standing.
Yes, I will. I do think we probably should take a moment to talk about why Mr. Rounds is not here and why we're a little bit in disarray. Would you like to explain that?
Yes, Madam President, members of the board. We were informed about 5:45, 5:50 that there was an emergency call at one of our middle schools. A couple of students had been hurt, and Mr. Rounds is with the family at the hospital right now. The student appears to be stable and has been transported to a trauma center, and that's where Mr. Rounds is with the family, so he asked me to take over for him.
Thank you.
With that, Madam President, we'll move to the superintendent's report, and at this time, it's my great honor to introduce our newest principals and assistant principals to the Board of Education. We introduced them at our administrators' retreat, but not all of you were there, and so we wanted to make sure that all of you got to meet this incredible group of individuals that are leading our schools. So we will introduce our new principals first, and then we'll move to our assistant principals. At Alameda Elementary, we have Deborah Rosenkranz. Deborah, if you would stand up and remain standing. At Desert Hills, Jamie Sweeney has taken the helm there, serving as interim principal last year and appointed full-time principal or permanent principal this year. Krista Audrey at East Picacho Elementary transferred to East Picacho from Tomba, and I have finally gotten used to calling you the principal at East Picacho. We have Annette Otero Nunez, who is at Tomba Elementary, transferring there from assistant principal at Doñana. Welcome, Annette. We have Gregory Howell. Gregory is taking the helm at University Hills. One of my schools. I should know that, Gregory, right? University Hills, and the staff is happy to have him. At Valley View, we have Dr. Arsenio Romero, who has taken over the leadership role in that school. At our jump and leap programs, we have Kathy Adams, who has taken the leadership at that school. Those are your new principals, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for taking this awesome responsibility on. We have a few more APs that I would like to recognize now. Brenda Ballard is the assistant principal at Alameda Elementary. Joan Howard has taken over the assistant principalship at Booker T. Washington. Kelly Modis is joining. She's not new to the AP role, but she is now a half-time principal at Central Elementary, serving in a dual role at Mesia and Central Elementary. Ramona Costa is at Desert Hills. Welcome, Ramon. It's good to see you. Emma Castaneda is the assistant principal at Doñana Elementary. And Nubia Tarazona, Nubia is joining the team at East Picacho. Teresa Garcia at Hermosa Heights. Is Teresa with us this evening? I don't see Teresa. Yuri Castillo-Leva, Yuri is joining the team at Highland Elementary, a rather large elementary school, and your expertise is much appreciated. Margarita Paras is joining the team at Hillrise Elementary. There you are. How are you? Good to see you. And Melody Holman is at Monte Vista. Melody, good to see you. Gail Estrada and Sarah Finkie, hi there, Sarah, are joining as the assistant principals at Sonoma Elementary. Rudy Leos is joining the team at Tomba Elementary.
Oh, there you are, Rudy, way in the back. Good to see you.
And Vanji Barella is at Valley View Elementary. We have, at our middle schools, Michelle Harris, Shelley. Harris is joining the team at Camino Real Middle School. Dr. Tony Hull will be one of our assistant principals at Mesa Middle School. Michael Gandara is going to be our assistant principal at Picacho Middle School. Elizabeth Cole, Elizabeth, there's Elizabeth, is going to be joining the team at Vista Middle School, and Christie Mitchell is joining the team, but she was part of the team as dean of students last year, but now she's a full-fledged assistant principal. Welcome, Christie. And at our high schools, we have two gentlemen that you'll recognize, Stephen Rodriguez, way in the back, and Eric Frost are two new APs at Mayfield High School. And at Centennial High School, Susie Hendy will be joining that team. She's not able to be with us this evening, and David Carrillo. David, welcome. At Early College High School Medical Academy, we have Dr. Marcy Oxford, who is joining that team as the dean of students for the first class at the Medical Academy. Thank you, Dr. Oxford, for taking on that awesome responsibility. With that, Madam President, members of the board, those are your assistant principals. Madam President, members of the board, this morning, Dr. Voigtaw and Mr. Rounds, myself, Dr. Wendy Miller Tomlinson, and Melissa De Laurentis attended the Doñana County Commission's Spaceport Work Session. Under discussion for a period of time was the Spaceport Resolution. The Spaceport Resolution was introduced by the chair of the committee at their last county commission meeting, and it is to examine the use of the Spaceport funds and to perhaps provide an alternative, if the resolution were to pass, to transfer about 60% of the funding now realized by the public schools, Gadsden, Hatch, and the Las Cruces Public Schools and our charter schools in the area, that 60% of the current funding would be re-appropriated to New Mexico State University for a variety of programs, one of them being scholarships for students, an endowed chair, professional development opportunities that would be directed by the NMSU staff. And the superintendent gave an update this morning to them on the difference in the SCG for the state equalization guarantee and the use of gross receipts tax, and how the equalization guarantee is based on property tax, not gross receipts tax. As you'll recall, there was legislation introduced by Representative Cheryl Williams Stapleton from Bernalillo County to capture gross receipts tax and put it into the equalization formula. With that, Madam President, you were in attendance. If you would like to make some comments.
Well, as the school board president and as a member of that advisory group from the beginning, I have to say that I think the way the money is allocated and being used now benefits actually the most people, the most students and families in Doñana County. I think moving the fund to New Mexico State University is a state institution, and it serves students from all over the state, and the funds would therefore be distributed out of Doñana County to people from outside this county, and this is where the money comes from, because our homeowners, our people who live here, are paying the tax for this, and this was a purpose they understood when they voted to approve the tax. So it's difficult for us, and of course, we will be advocating for the school district as much as possible, and I hope that all our board members will stay very aware of it and keep on top of the processes as they roll out at the state.
Thank you. Any questions from any of the board members on the meeting this morning? We will keep you updated as the commission continues its deliberation. Mr. Rounds is quite involved in the conversations, and we'll keep you updated through your weekly or give us a holler if you have any questions. Madam President, at this time, I'd like to move to update on school enrollment and staffing, and Dr. Marufo has done an exceptionally good job of keeping track of numbers, but I'd like you to provide a macro view of where we are with enrollment, and if you have any particular questions, Dr. Marufo is here to assist in answering those. At our elementary schools, we seem to be experiencing some large growth at three elementary schools, Highland, Fair Acres, and Monte Vista, where we've seen some growth. We've seen some loss at two schools, White Sands and Alameda Elementary. A little bit of a decline at Tomba, but not substantial. At our middle schools, Camino Real Middle School and Zia Middle School seem to be experiencing the growth, but we are experiencing some decrease in enrollment at Picacho and Lynn Middle Schools, respectively. At the high schools, Mayfield High School and Oñate High School, we've seen a slight drop in enrollment. These are only numbers for the first five days of school. So as you know, with school enrollment, things don't really stabilize until after the Labor Day holiday, so we are keeping track of those every day. Dr. Marufo has done a warm-body count to confirm the numbers that we're seeing in synergy, and we will keep the board appraised. Right now, as of today, our actual enrollment was 24,103 students. Our projected enrollment for, when we projected the enrollment for this year, we were projecting in at 24,075. So we're a bit above our projected enrollment, and Dr. Marufo will be looking at numbers not only by aggregate in the district, aggregate at the school, but she'll actually start to break those down by grade level and also by teacher, so we can make sure that if any adjustments need to be made to cover some large classes. We know in visits to school that we have some large kindergartens that we're dealing with. We know that we have some large first-grade classes, and Dr. Marufo will be providing some direction for us on that. Dr. Marufo, would you like to add anything to that?
No, just, you know, I'd like to reiterate the information that you provided and to let the board know that we will be moving expeditiously in terms of reassigning teachers. I've started to notify principals where we see some decrease in enrollment, so they're aware that they may possibly be losing staff to alleviate overgrowth in some of our schools.
Any questions from the board? Señora Flores?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. In particular, I had actually sent out an email about East Picacho. In particular, I had actually sent out an email about East Picacho, 2931 in a kindergarten. That sounds like a perfect third kindergarten.
Correct.
And I'm just hoping that we don't wait until the 40th day for those children. They need a quick solution.
Absolutely.
That they get placed and, not East, it is East Picacho, isn't it? I always get confused between Picacho and East Picacho.
Yes, Madam President.
But just if we, I, every year, it's the same thing, but it's the kindergartners that need that assistance more quickly than the others. And even though a fifth-grade class with 31 is not a good idea, those kindergartners are the ones that we need to be thinking about so that they bond with their teacher.
Board members, are there comments? Mr. Davis?
Yeah. So right after Labor Day, you're going to come up with an updated count?
Madam President, Mr. Davis, we're actually meeting on a daily basis right now to look at numbers and any shifts that we're seeing, and that's why Dr. Marufo brings those issues to the Superintendent. But the Superintendent has been calling us into session to talk about the numbers and coming up with a game plan to do the shifts. So we don't wait for those classes that we know are really large. Dr. Marufo will be bringing a plan forward to shift staff or perhaps to look at additional staff that we may need to bring on to take care of those excesses of class sizes.
Have we just started going back to the class sizes required before the big?
Yes, Madam President, Mr. Davis, as mandated by the state legislature in House Bill Two, there was language to move us back. Remember, it's a three-year phase-in, so we are building in the staff to take us back to statutory class-size limits.
And we'll all hear the big story after Labor Day.
We will give you final enrollment numbers at that time. That's when the best.
And staffing.
Yes, sir.
Senora Flores?
Yes, just one more question, perhaps to Mr. Dean, is how many new positions are still available in the system?
Madam President, and Senora Flores, I'm getting a four from Dr. Marufo because she actually has those positions opened and working on filling those. So she gave me the four sign.
Okay. So she's the...
That's all I know.
Ms. Hall, do you have any questions? Dr. Phillips? Yeah? I have a question in our packet. You gave us the open position announcement as of 8:13, and I guess that showed us that we still have lots of jobs to fill. Would you like to talk about that a little bit?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Members of the Board, in your packet today, I've provided you with an updated version of our current vacancies within the district. At the elementary level, we currently have 13 openings, one first grade at MacArthur Elementary. We have four special ed positions still open. We have six bilingual positions open, one Head Start Education Facilitator and a Title One position at Dona Anna Elementary. At the middle school, we have one science position open at Zia and one librarian position at Lynn Middle School. At high school, we have a science and a math opening at O'Nate High School, an ROTC instructor at Mayfield High School, and a sped teacher opening at Rio Grand Prep and O'Nate High School. So currently, in order to fill those jobs, we have been meeting with every new substitute applicant that has come in to apply for substitute position. Most of them are certified teachers, so in that respect, we've been sitting with them and looking at their license that they may possess or endorsements to see if they may be able to help fill one of our slots. We have filled previous vacancies this past week with student teachers from New Mexico State. However, New Mexico State this year had one bilingual student teacher, when you can see we have six vacancies, so that's a hard-to-fill spot, as are the special ed, math, and science positions. We're also, we posted all of these vacancies across the nation on TeachersTeachers.com. We've had some inquiry from Illinois as well as Michigan today, people wanting to move to the warmer weather here in the Southwest, and I have no shame in offering them bags of chili to try to entice them to the Southwest. So we're working pretty hard. We're working with New Mexico State to try to fill some of these positions, and New Mexico State has been a wonderful partner in helping us with that. But it, those are, those are four areas that are very tough to fill across the nation.
Need to take a deep breath.
Madam President, just to elaborate a little bit more, there is a resolution that staff has prepared to address this issue, which we will discuss later in the agenda, but it directly relates to an issue just addressed by Dr. Marufo. Madam President, this time, I'd like to take a personal point of privilege to inform you about a PED memo, a memo from the Public Education Department that we just received today. It was dated August 18th and sent to the Superintendent and to Mr. Hand in Assessment. I would like to inform the Board that we received a memo today from Dr. Peter Goldschmidt, Assistant Secretary for Assessment and Accountability, from the Public Education Department. The memo specifically states that the PED will not be paying for interim assessments for the 2014-2015 academic year. Remember, in the past, the PED, the Public Education Department always paid for our four-through-10 interim assessments. The Board will recall that the PED has paid for these interim assessments in the past and now asserts that the monies for these assessments were moved above the line into the state equalization guarantee, into the SCG formula. In discussion, in discussion this afternoon with our Superintendent, he somewhat disagrees with that conclusion, but nevertheless, Stan had the following to say. "I have listened to teachers over the past two years and my NEA colleagues that too many instructional hours are spent testing, and this takes valuable time away from instruction. Given the memo's contents, I am considering removing the formative assessment requirement completely in direct response to the teachers' concerns. In lieu of the formative assessment, I have asked the Deputy Superintendent to consider the development of an end-of-course exam in mathematics and English Language Arts for the fourth and fifth grade. If we move forward, the Director of Elementary Instruction and the Director of Assessment, Analysis, and Research will convene a team of teachers to develop these end-of-course exams that can be used to complement the teacher evaluation system, where 35% of the student achievement indicator would be the PARC, and 15% would be the end-of-course exam." Currently, our evaluation plan that has been developed by our Associate Superintendent is, you know, the 35-15 split in that teacher evaluation. Without that formative assessment, it would, it would mean that the teachers would be evaluated entirely on a PARC assessment, one snapshot in time. And so this may be a viable option to give two pieces to that component of the evaluation. Stan has taken this under consideration, and he asked that if the Board would like to comment on this, we will take very copious notes and pass those along to the Superintendent for further discussion.
Board, comments on the proposal to dispense with, I guess, discovery? Is that what it is?
It would be actually suspending the form, discovery, what we call discovery assessment, grades four through 10.
Okay.
And while we had reduced, as you'll recall in our assessment plan, the discovery assessment was usually given three times a year. We had reduced it to only the first semester, because we will be giving the PARC problem-based assessment in March, the summative assessment in May, and we didn't want to duplicate discovery assessments at those times, because it was a lot of testing. But this would take discovery completely off the table, and Mr. Rounds is contemplating that move.
Board members, comments on the proposal from the Superintendent?
Well, I think we need to think about it. Let's, let's see what we can come up with. I'm thinking of fourth and fifth-grade teachers having to give end-of-course exams in math and...
English Language Arts.
English Language Arts. I'm wondering if there's something else that we can use in those grades, especially for our bilingual students. I just feel like we get, we eliminate discovery, and that's a good thing, but still, it's going to be a lot of testing for some students. So let us, I have to think about this and see how it all falls.
Ms. Hall, you have any thoughts?
I'm in agreement with Senora Flores. We need to examine it carefully before we jump into anything I agree.
I think I would like to see fourth grade, fourth, third, and fourth, fourth and fifth.
Fourth and fifth.
I'd like to see those teachers consulted.
Yes, good idea.
That would be my thought. Mr. Davis?
Are we having a book read or a...
We're not, we are offering comments to the Superintendent on his proposal.
Well, I was saying, I just would hold off. We had a chance to talk about it in depth.
I think, well, we would, we possibly could have that on a work session, but...
That's...
We need to know when that decision must be made, I suppose. That's part of our deal. Senor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Perhaps Dr. Hand could give us some other alternatives? Is this the only way to go? And see if there's something else.
Thank you.
Dr. Phillips, you have a thought?
I agree that we need more discussion about this.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I'll convey that, those conversations, those comments to the Superintendent. He just wanted to bring it up. It happened today, and I think Stan is thinking about it, or the Superintendent is thinking about it as well and appreciates those comments. And actually, those were some of his feelings as well, but he wanted to give the Board a time to chime in. With that, Madam President, let, that's, I'll conclude the Superintendent's update.
Very well. We, actually, we've heard from Dr. Marufo, and I'm going to ask the Board if we need to hear more about the Certified Classified Employee Report. Mr. Davis?
These vacancies that he's trying to fill, there's just nobody answering there?
Yes, we do, but we always want to be looking at people who are highly qualified, and we tend to have teachers who apply for the positions that may not necessarily be qualified. For example, if it's a bilingual classroom, it requires a bilingual endorsement. And so I think some of the principals in the audience that have interviewed candidates out there have noted that, you know, they want to ensure that that highly qualified is adhered to for their schools.
On the bilingual classes, don't they have the classes where they have two teachers that flip-flop?
In some schools, there is, they're bilingual set up. Their arrangement is that they do have a two-way, so to speak, bilingual set up. However, that may not be the case in all of our schools. In some classrooms, the bilingual teacher may be self-contained.
Okay, thank you.
Let's move to, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, I have a question, or maybe it's more of a comment for Dr. Marufo. I, I went ahead and counted, you filled about 173 positions that are filled recently. The other, the other thing that I looked at was over the resignations. I think they were for, were they for May, June, July, or around that period?
Yes.
And I counted like approximately 60. I didn't do it very carefully, but I just wanted to know if this was high for, for this, is this exceptionally high for this year, or is it usual? And the other comment I had about this is, I recognize so many names on that list, and that concerned me, and they're not people my age, they're younger than me. So I'm just asking what your thoughts are on this.
Yes, Madam President, Senora Flores, in checking with my colleagues in the HR Department, I did ask the same question and noted that it is not abnormal for that number of resignations to occur. This year, we have a new resignation form, and we're asking, we're analyzing that data on the resignations. How many years have they been teaching? The reason that they're retiring? And so I would be happy to bring back a report once we complete the analysis of the resignations.
That, that might be a good thing, so we can see. The concern being, of course, that we are losing teachers. And, you know, it's hard to fill, obviously, some of these positions, so we don't want to lose teachers. Thank you.
It's true.
Experienced teachers.
True. It hurts the district.
So will we see that on a future agenda?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We are moving to, what is that number?
Turnaround.
Turnaround, from the Superintendents. Superintendent Andrea Fletcher is here to speak with us about that.
Yes, so, good evening, Madam President, members of the Board. I'm very pleased to report on just some of the activities for turnaround for the summer. So we actually had an incredibly busy summer, and I wanted you to, let me get a flavor of some of the things that we experienced. So we added three new schools to turnaround this year, so that was Sonoma, Sonoma, I'm sorry, East Picacho and Hornada joined this summer. So those three principals went to the University of Virginia this summer for seven days of intensive leadership training, and I have asked them to come tonight and just share some of their biggest takeaways. So if those three principals could come up, we have Melissa Galoz from Sonoma and Krista Audrey from East Picacho and Julio Martinez from Hornada will start for us.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board, and everyone out there in the crowd. I was fortunate enough, oh, and I'm Julio Martinez, under Principal down at Hornada Elementary. I was fortunate enough to be part of two programs, actually. On the summer of 2013, the New Mexico Public Education Department put together a program called Principals Pursuing Excellence, PPE for short. It started in the summer, couple of trainings, couple of trainings in the, in the fall, couple of trainings in the spring. So I was fortunate enough to be part of that. The reason why, the criteria was you had to be a D or an F school, and we all know where we were, but not there anymore, but we were there. That led into the turnaround being at the University of Virginia this past summer, and the nice thing about it was the PPE program mirrored all the principles of the turnaround process. They, they based their program on that. So when we went this summer, we received a beautiful, just dynamic training for those days that we were there. And what I left with is that it goes back to all of us being together for the same cause, all of us being together for one purpose. All of your meetings, all of your PD, all of your data meetings, all of, all of, all of the, the whole school just going into one, one cause, which is just student achievement, just being there for our kids. And one thing I learned was it's, it's guidance, you know? Gone are the days where you go to a school and say, you're going to do it this way, this way, this way, this way, this way, this way, and we'll be good to go at the end of the year. It's more about all of the expertise that's in the building, getting us all together, deciding and looking at student achievement and seeing where, where are they not learning, and what strategies can we use together to fix that? And then where are they learning, and what strategies can we use to improve that? So that's what the two programs mirrored, but it was, it was all based off of the University of Virginia principles that they, that they put together, okay?
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board. Thank you for having us. My experience at UVA this summer was probably the most rigorous, intensive, and meaningful learning experience of my career. I, I can, I can tell you, we spent a lot of time together as, as administrators, a lot. Yeah, a lot of time together. I mean, like, you're literally together for like 15 hours a day, and we read and we studied together, we worked in teams together with... And we read and we studied together, we worked in teams together with our shepherds. And one of my favorite articles, I just kind of wanted to give you a little bit about it. It was an article from the Toyota Corporation and how they go about doing business. And one of the things that was really meaningful to me was the word "gamba." It's a Japanese word literally meaning the real place. And in Toyota, it means getting down on the floor. So leaders can't do their jobs unless they're right in the middle of the business and where it's happening. And that was really, really meaningful for me because we as leaders, we don't know what's happening unless we're right in the middle of the learning that's taking place with our students. And so as a piece of this article, one of the strategies we learned about was the five whys. And I had heard it before, but this went into a little bit more just definition and practical ways to use it. And when you're looking for the root cause of an issue within a school, you start with a five whys. So for example, why don't we have enough parent involvement within our school? Because parents are working. Okay, well, when I answer that question, do I have any control over parents working? Absolutely not. So I can't answer that question with an answer that I can't control. So I have to go back to the question, let me answer it again with something I can control. And you just continue to whittle away at your root cause analysis. And once you have that root cause analysis, the intent then is that you commit to action, to changing that piece. And that's how you get down to systemic change. And within that action piece, we talked about the knowing-doing gap. And the knowing-doing gap, I'll just, I'll just give you a great example that came up while we were there. The knowing-doing gap. I know I need to lose weight. I even know how to lose weight. Why do I not do it? You know, so that happens to us a lot in school, too. I know what to do, I even know how to do it, but how do I get to the place of really doing it? And so we really talked about a commitment to action. And at East Picacho, we talked about it so much that action, the word, became our acronym for the year. So A, analyzing our learning and data, C, committing to action, T, teamwork, I, intervention, O, owning our feedback, and N, never giving up. And so by combining all of those things, we're going to commit to action. And our action may not be the best thing that actually happened, but the intent is that you will never change things if you don't do something. So if you continue to do what you've always done, you know what the result will be. So get down to it, take some risks, be creative. And so through this process, I feel like I actually have tools now. So as an administrator, every administrator will have a teacher that comes to them and says, I can't possibly work any harder than what I work right now. And still yet, I'm not getting to the bottom of what my kids need, what can I do? And honestly, right now, I feel like I actually have a framework and some tools to be able to get past that hump and to continue to support the teacher to getting toward the results that they're looking for. And I didn't realize that until I went to this training. And so really, I feel very, very fortunate to have been there.
And on behalf of the three of us, Madam President, members of the board, and since Mr. Rounds isn't present, Dr. Sanchez, we are appreciative of the opportunity to be a part of the turnaround in the UVA partnership for leaders in education. And I feel, you've heard a lot from Krista Vodri and from Mr. Martinez about the work and the purposeful planning, the action planning, collaborative work. But for me, it was about saving lives and the urgency of our work every day that we do, going above and beyond for every child every day. We, you, you talked earlier about the assessment pieces and data and assessment. And for us at Sonoma, we pride ourselves that our students are not our test score. They are not a color, they're not a level of proficiency, they are a student. And what we do every day is in the needs of our students, every student, every child. So our work is dire, it is crucial. And I feel in education, we don't have time, we don't have one more week, we don't have one more month. We don't have another year, we have today and we have every day to make that change in our schools. And so I feel being a part of turnaround with the group that we are in, I feel we have the support needed. And I feel it's a community, it's all of our stakeholders, our parents, our students, our staff that will make that difference. And I'm proud to be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So as you can see, we had some great experiences there. We also had our principals who were in the second year of their training go for another four days. But then we came back and we realized that it's more than just building great leaders. We have so much expertise in our buildings that it's really about how we engage all of the expertise to move our students. And so we came back, we spent quite a bit of time with our leadership teams thinking about assessment and shifting the paradigm of assessment in our schools so that I think frequently teachers have felt that assessment is something that's been done to them and not something that will help, help them to guide the instruction in their classroom. And, and I think we've also not particularly valued their expertise. So we recognize the importance of bringing all of them together. So we had two days in early August where one day we brought all of the elementary turnaround teachers together and another day with all of the middle school turnaround teachers together to deeply look at the assessments that were going to be given at the end of the year, park assessments, and think about the instructional changes that need to happen based on what they know. Our kids need to know. So really having them create the assessments. So I actually have some of the teachers here that were part of that process. And I'm going to ask the elementary teachers to come up first. I have Rose, no, I'm sorry. I have Rachel Polk and Naomi Guzman from Conley Elementary. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you, Andrea.
And I wanted them to share some of their experiences in that day, kind of what we did and what you think the outcome will be and how that felt to participate.
Okay, thank you. Rachel Polk, I'm at Conley Elementary and I'm teaching fourth grade, general education. Most of you know me as a special education teacher, but I am general education this year. And I was in the fourth grade math part of the training or the development. And what we did is we designed our interim assessment to try to align to the park standards, to the park expectations the best as possible. And the first thing we really had to do was determine a definition of the term rigor. And that is an easily misunderstood term. A lot of times it's thought, well, instead of doing addition into the thousands, we'll do addition into the millions. But that's not really what rigor is about. Like rigor is kind of much more designed for critical thinking and interpretation and using many different facets all at once. And so we looked at, we started with discovery questions as our base. And we've always kind of considered discovery to be a fairly rigorous assessment, something that was going to prepare students for the SBA or whatever, but then when you compare it to park, it's really very shallow in what it asks students to do. And so with that as our base, we looked to see how we can tie in greater rigor and greater thinking and more hands-on applications to the questions to create the interim. And I thought that was very beneficial in a lot of ways because it does make a more direct connection from the classroom to the assessment, being able to create that. And if we're really able to utilize, or as we're really able to utilize, these assessments in a positive way, I mean, not only are we preparing students for the park, you know, but we're also preparing them for overall lifelong critical thinking skills, really critiquing the problem, breaking it down, using different things and kind of, you know, what keeps ringing in my head, common sense. We're teaching a lot of common sense. And I was really grateful for the opportunity to participate in the training.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Naomi Guzman, kinder dual language teacher at Conley Elementary. For me, it was a real eye-opener. The first thing they had us do was look at a third grade park assessment. And I, you know, I recognize some of the faces here, and we're like, oh my God, I cannot believe that third graders are asked to do this. So it was just really thinking that our job as kindergarten teachers is not just teaching them the alphabet, learning to read and write. It goes much deeper than that and like Ms. Polk was saying, you know, making them critical thinkers and developing that common sense that sadly is, you know, it's kind of lacking these days. One thing that I did notice from the park assessment is that kids are not, we're not, they're not looking for the right answer. They're looking for multiple ways to get to that answer. So with that in mind, we, you know, took our standards and benchmarks, the scope and sequence, we dissected them. And our key, you know, the number one thing we were looking for was rigor. How can we increase the rigor for, you know, in kindergarten? So, you know, you're, most of you are not kindergarten teachers, so you think like, how can you increase the rigor? It's just the alphabet, you know, but really looking for multiple ways for allowing students to show what they know. Not just one way. Show me how you know it. What, how do you know you're right? Really making them think about it. So we were in the English Language Arts group, so we developed our test as rigorous as we could. And the nice thing was that the group next to us was developing the math test. And so we got to switch and we were looking, we looked over each other's test and we got to really like look at it and analyze them and see how can we increase the rigor even more? With, you know, bearing in mind that they're five-year-olds. And so we did that and I really appreciate it because this way you feel like it's not just somebody from God knows where giving you a test to do. We developed it together. So when we give that test, we know that these are things that we, that those kids should know. So for me, that was one of the nice things. And I look forward to doing it again for the rest of the year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We also have two teachers from Vista Middle School. So we have Ray Munoz, who is an eighth grade math and algebra teacher, and Rose Price, who's a bilingual seventh grade teacher. So I'd like for them to give their perspective.
Good evening. Just to kind of touch on what some of the elementary experiences were. So last year I had a chance to take a leave of absence for a district and I had a chance to work with Park directly for the majority of the year and also work a little bit with NMSU and looking at really math education, math teaching. And something that I, I learned with, with my experiences is this idea that mathematics is not about a procedure, it's about the process. And how as teachers we change our instructional practices. So getting a chance with Ms. Hammond at Vista to be, to do this opportunity, I had a, I was kind of curious to going in that first day, seeing how it was going to be and so on. And what, and we talked about, my colleagues talked about the test and the assessment that we developed, which we did look at the park and we had a chance to talk about the evidence tables and how Park talks about, it's not about the content, but about instructional practices and what you do in the classroom. But I think the best opportunity I took away from that day was just having an opportunity to sit with colleagues from other schools and talk about our instructional practices in the classrooms. I really get a hit of if we want kids to actually do these type of problems, what moves we have to make to make sure they engage in these opportunities in the classroom. So it's, yeah, Park, the content is delivered down a couple of grade levels, but really it's about getting kids, kids can engage in the math practices, critical thinking, getting a chance to critique the reasoning of others, using appropriate tools and that kind of stuff. So the opportunity that we get to allow ourselves to talk with other colleagues around the school to develop these interims is just as important as having an interim to have a check for our students as we go through.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Rose Price. I'm actually new to the district. I moved here from Roswell, New Mexico. And I was fortunate to get hired at Vista as the bilingual. I was excited to be part of that process because it was a process. We were able to work not only with our group, with our seventh grade, but we were able to group, work together with other schools. So that builds that consistency, that those steps that we need to get those higher scores. And we were able to contribute equally different ideas. And I was like, hey, I like that idea. We were able to come up with, oh, this question will definitely, what do you think? We rated the questions. We looked at our scope and sequence and decided, you know, what is it asking us? Can we even understand the lingo? So if we don't understand the lingo, how can we teach it? And if it's just given to us the night before, how can I plan for it? So the stress of having a new test and then coming together and actually having a day to accept the data, well, accept the test and look at it and dissect it ourselves, oh, wait a minute, I can target this with this and this. And so we started correlating the scope, scope and sequence with the park. So that's what I liked. I liked the consistency that we build. I was even able, able to get an email from another school and we're, we can, we can collaborate. So it doesn't just have to be my school, it's our school, it's our students, all of them. And we want them to achieve because that's the, that's our focus, is the student achievement, and that's where we want to move. And not just with language arts, English-speaking students. We want to move with bilingual and also with sped. So we had a little good combination group that everybody was able to be at the same platform to build the steps to get to that higher level. So I really like that, that we could build that. Like, like they said, we, we built the test, it was harder than the park. You know, because teachers will build a more rigorous test. We will, because we do it in our classrooms. And when we see our students, we know from there, we can build more to get them to that higher level because we need high expectations and our children will meet them. They will.
Thank you very much. So it was quite an exciting summer and we just really enjoyed the collaboration and having just the great minds of all of our teachers and administrators working together. It was just a very powerful experience for us.
Madam, Madam President, if I could, I know some of our students are leaving, but Madam President, we have some students with us from early college, high school, right? And I just wanted to recognize them, so.
And are they taking a class? Are you here for a duty?
The homework assignment? Are you going to take a test on it tomorrow? No wonder the teacher asked me to write 15 questions that were hard.
Good to see you all here.
Welcome back.
I have no respect on crowds, everybody leaves. What worries me is many of those are my employees coming back. Oh, Madam President, members of the board.
Welcome back.
Sorry, I'm a little late. I apologize.
We are on Roman numeral four C.
And Madam President, if I could, let me just make one statement, just because I think everybody's probably wondering what in the world is going on. So this evening, shortly after five o'clock, we, I think you may have gone through some of this, Stephen. We got a call that a 911 call had come from one of our schools, Picacho Middle School. We had a lightning strike incident. We had three students, one adult coach, who were transported to Mountain View Regional. I've been over there working with Denton and his staff as we took care of them. Now, the good news is everybody's stable. We have one student who was given significant assistance at the field and transported first and is, is stable and on his way to, to El Paso, to the trauma center there. And so been dealing with parents and kids and coaches and the adult things that need to go on with that. We need to thank our staff from Picacho Middle. A number of them came to the hospital and then also at site, there's two parts of the world we deal in emergencies with. The onsite work, the investigation work of what happened, the work at the hospital and getting people there. And then dealing with families and the emotional tensions that happen with that. And so we had a chance to go through all of that this evening. And the good news is everybody who works for us and works with us did exactly what they needed to do. And we're proud of that effort. And we're, we're very pleased at this point that we have everybody stabilized and being cared for medically as they need to be. And so, thank you so much. And so I just, I just want people to know that that's the case. And I've got a team in my office here, which I've been meeting with just as I got back and I've been on the phone with the whole time, which is called our crisis team. And we're going through the work we do to make sure anytime you do an emergency, we have done all the pieces, parts we need to do. And so at any rate, I want to congratulate everybody else, everybody on their efforts. And members of the board, thank you for your indulgence with my absence. That was scrambling in a pretty crummy situation. So I think we're at item?
Five.
Five, and we are, are we at, at five, A5, is that our?
That's correct.
A3.
Oh, A3, okay.
We took approval of vendor payments.
Thank you, Madam.
Off the consent and so we'll do with that.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll turn it back over to you. This is your meeting.
Thank you, teachers.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Rounds, I'm glad Mr. Rounds showed up. I don't know if my ego could have taken the room vacating right before the finance reports.
I do what I can, Mr.
I do what I can, Mr. Dean.
So, we will say it's Mr. Rounds' fault.
Absolutely.
Included in your packet tonight are the payments for, that have been made to the vendors for the month of August. Uh, total, total distributions of cash for the month of August was 21,161,655 dollars, 39 cents. Now, the largest chunk of that was for debt service payments, which constitute about 13 million dollars that was paid on August 1st. That was, uh, almost 3.4 million dollars in checks and, uh, about 17 and a half million dollars in direct deposits. Madam president, uh, Mr. Rounds, I recommend approval of the, uh, vendor payments.
Board members, we need a motion to approve the vendor payments and then we can have discussion.
We, we just pulled three, didn't we?
We're on three, which is the vendor payments. And we need, uh, a motion to approve and then we will have discussion.
Second?
It's been moved and second that we approved the vendor's date, payments and now we will have some discussion. Senior Flores?
Madam chair, um, the only reason I, uh, asked for this is because there is one payment on there that I had asked that we consider reducing and consequently, it was paid in July and we were supposed to have gotten some information back as to the necessity for that payment. It's for $10,000. I think most of the board members know what it's about and that's why I vote no on vendor pay, on this particular set of vendor payments.
All right, and we have, can, can you tell me if we have a report forthcoming?
Madam president, members of the board, um, Ms. Avantis, who's in there working, that team element, is in the process of gathering the information together. She's, she is meeting with both the chamber and the VITA and others that we pay these fees to. We're doing collective data for you and I anticipate we'll have that to you at your next meeting.
But in the meanwhile, because it was budgeted this year...
Well, madam president, so the, the view that we took was because it was budgeted in the current budget cycle explicitly and the board had not acted to halt payment. It's our normal, our, our normal due date and we appreciate Ms. Flores' concern. We were targeting the new fiscal year of 1415 as far as the policy discussion you were having as a board. So, I directed Mr. Dean to go ahead and render payment on our normal cycle for that particular membership.
So, this was the end of fiscal year 13, 14?
No, it is actually the beginning of fiscal year 1415. I misspoke. I was targeting 1560.
Correct.
This, this was, we have, we have many items of business in the month of July as we start up the year and that is one of the fees we normally pay at that time. And so, we took that.
So, wha, what do you want to do? Do you want, did you want to table it until?
No, because it's al, it's already been paid. So, there's no way of asking back for the money. I had asked for it to not be paid until we finished our discussion and to vote on it, but it was paid. So, therefore, I'm voting no on the vendor payments this one time. That's all.
Other board members, do you have any comments or concerns, questions? All right, are we ready to vote?
Yep.
Uh, all in favor of approving the vendor payments?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Four, four and one opposed.
Thank you, madam president.
And now, we are looking at, uh, five, A5, fourth quarter reports for the Los Cruces Public Schools and Los Montanos Charter High School. And Mr. Dean, be, I assume you're the talker on this, are you?
Yes, ma'am.
No, no, I have a que, I have a que, an interjection and I think it's a bird walk, so I'm gonna do it briefly. I noticed that on the, uh, an upcoming, on item on the professional development report, did we skip that?
No.
That there were bookmarks available for each subsection of that. And every time we get a quarterly report from you and it has more than one school...
There's no bookmarks?
It's, there's no way for me to sort where the ne, where the next one begins. So, if I want to examine Los, Los Montanos, if I want to identify that page, I have to scroll through the entire thing to get there. So, I'm asking for some thinking about how to make that more readily accessible on the index of the PDF file.
Can do that.
And I'm sorry I did that to us.
Madam president, I'm gonna ask if I can be excused just for a minute, we need to complete a little bit of business in here. I just got one.
That's fine.
So, I'll be right back.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. Now.
Okay. Madam president, members of the board, Dr. Sanchez, included in the packet tonight are the reports for the Los Cruces Public Schools for the year ended June 30th, uh, 2014. Now, the, the Board of Education has seen, received several updates in regard to, to our cash position. The cash position at the end of the fiscal year was approximately 8.3 million dollars. Now, our cash that we budgeted was approximately, and I'm rounding these off, when you get to this num, millions of dollars, we can round off a, a couple, a, a hundred thousand. But, the cash that we went to budget with was approximately 9.2, 9.3 million dollars. So, on the surface, we have a $9 million shortfall that our cash actually came in in compared to budget because our, our, again, our, our, uh, actual cash balance came in at approximately 8.3 million dollars. And, and that is one of the issues we're current, currently dealing with. We'll need to go in and look at our budget. That's about 1% of our total budget. Um, so, it's not a huge cause for panic, but it is an area of extreme concern. This is why I'm bald. And, uh, but anyway, this is an area of concern that we need to keep our finger on, we need to be very watchful on. Um, and after we get the 40-day report and we see what our growth numbers are, um, then, then that will also direct our, uh, furthered attention to, to making some reductions throughout the budget. Um, but again, the cash balance was 8 point, approximately 3 million dollars. This is a reduction of cash balance from the previous fiscal year of 4.8 million dollars. Uh, our year, year-end cash balance was approximately 4.8% of our total SEG as compared to 7.7% of the previous fiscal year. In the federal funds, in the 24,000 fund, that we did have a reimbursement of 6.8 million dollars at the end of the fiscal year that was pending from the Public Education Department. Most all of that was received in the month of July. That allowed us to go ahead and process all the payments. At, at, at no time did we, did we any, encounter any cash flow problems, um, this year because of how we manage the cash flow. Uh, the revenue report, the district reported, uh, 258 million dollars worth of revenue for the total year. Uh, 66.7% of that was also in the operational fund. So, um, the, the largest fund is the op, is the operational fund. We reported expenditures total for all funds of approximately 261 million dollars for the fiscal year. Madam president, that is my report. I stand for questions.
Board members, you have questions or comments? Senior Flores?
I, well, I have a comment and I, I, I do share your concern and I thank you for, for reporting that and I hope that we will continue to hear where we are, where we stand.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Davis?
Just, wouldn't we come back again after the 40-day count and look at it closer?
Madam president, if I may, one of the things that we need to do at this time is we need to, I hate to use the term hide and watch, but we've got to get all of our salaries encumbered. At this time, as we look at our, as we look at our accounting system, we are still developing the first payroll of the year. At that point, at the, at we have the first payroll of the year, there will still be a few vacancies. So, after all of the salaries are encumbered, I'm anticipating around the first week of September, um, that we would be able to really start getting a good, um, projection on what our salary cost is gonna be.
Ms. Hall, any questions?
I would just like to say that I'm very concerned about this and we need to stay on top of it.
Yes, ma'am.
But I know you will.
I want to be sure that I understand. Uh, so, our, we, what we are doing is using our cash reserve. We used some last year, it's less than the year before, we're using even more this year. So, at the end of this fiscal year, we will, we are, we will be in arrears if we don't have a fix in the middle here somewhere.
Yes, ma'am. Madam president, that is correct. Uh, however, we cannot end the year in arrears. We've got to land this plane, uh, at the finish line without going over. Um, but, yes, so that's, that's what makes this extremely difficult. What makes this year is extremely difficult as compared to some of the other years is to, to build the budget and to make it balanced, we went back and we analyzed how much we saved in vacancy savings throughout the years and we kind of took an average number. This is kind of risky and, and we, and we realized that over the past several years that our vacancies savings was anywhere between 2.1% all the way up to about a 2.4%. And that is, uh, an experienced teacher, you notice I didn't say older teacher, but an experienced teacher that retires, we hire a, a first-year teacher, there's some savings there. Or if we have, um, uh, positions that go unfield regardless of what that position may be, that generates vacancy savings. So, we went ahead to balance everything and to make the, the educational program work, we went ahead and took credit for those vacancy savings. That's why the, the 1.4 million dollars that we're looking at areas of concerns in our budget, that's why it's a little, it's, it's very critical this year.
Thank you, and I think you heard from the board that we share your concern and will want to be kept.
Madam chair, just a case in point, this is exactly why, um, I'm concerned about some of the extra expenditures and, I mean, these are little ones compared to operations, but still at the same point, what, what should we be directing all our money to? It should be towards, uh, teachers in classrooms to be with students to teach and that's, that should be our goal for everything. And sometimes that, uh, I have a problem with those other expenses. Okay?
Thank you. We're moving to 5B.
Madam president.
Instruction.
Madam president, we need, we still have Los Montanos.
Los Montanos, sorry. That's why I need a marker in it.
Madam president, members of the board, included in your packet is the, is the year-end report for Los Montanos. However, before we go to there, I need to report to you that we are missing one charter school. As of June 30th, La Academia de la Ora Suerta was still one of our charter schools and as of today, they have still not completed their year-end report. They've changed business managers during the year. As of July 1, they are a state charter, uh, but as of December, as of July 3, June 30th, they were still our charter. We're working with them to try to get their year-end report. Included in your packet is the report for Los Montanos Charter High School. Uh, they have a cash balance, they ended their oper, the year with an operating cash balance of 600, uh, $468,000, which is 23.7% of their SEG for the current year, I'm, for the current year. So, if you compare that to their SEG distribution, they've, um, they've accumulated 23.7% of their SEG. It's probably a little high. Their cash balance was $173,000 higher than their budget projections, so they're not gonna have to go back and reduce their budget during this, during the period. Uh, revenue report, they received, uh, 2.5 million dollars of revenue for the fiscal year and compared to the expenditures, um, which I did not write in the report, the, all funds were in balance, there were no functions, any, any areas of concern on my part. Madam president, that concludes my report and I stand for questions.
Thank you. Board members, any questions of Mr.?
I have a question.
Mr. Davis?
Mr. Dean, you're talking about the late reports from those charter schools that are now state. So, are we gonna be dinged for their late reports or are we gonna take their late report ding with them?
Madam president, Mr. Davis, we will get to share in the dean because as of June 30th, they were ours.
Still in audit.
So, what do we do about making sure they get it done? I mean, what can we do to control them getting it done?
At this time, um, they, they, their business manager retired and they hired another business manager who has not even lived in Los Cruces. We're working with them to try to get them to, to nudge them along to get this report done. We're working with their budget analyst in Santa Fe, um, and trying to apply lots of pressure to get the year-end, to get the year-end reports.
Any other comments?
So, your answer is?
We're trying to get it out of them, yes, sir. Uh, I will, I will put an update in this week's update for the board, but, uh, we are working with them to try and to get that information.
All right, thank you, thank you.
And do we have a duty to alert the state, who is now their supervisor, that we have not received that and, or you've done that already, I see?
Madam president, members of the board, the Public Education Department is already aware of it because they have to file it with them before we get it. And so, uh, we check it just about every day to see if it's been filed. And the Public Education Department is, has not received the report yet either.
I thought maybe you could get some help from the pad?
Madam president, Mr. Davis, we will certainly make that inquiry to the pad and we'll send you an update as soon as we get that information from the Public Education Department.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm now at Roman numeral five B, instruction.
Madam president, uh...
Item two.
Yeah, madam president, given, given the time, we'll go through this rather quickly. Uh, Joey Walkie is here to present the Title IX assurances for secondary schools as required by law.
Good evening, madam president, school board members, district administrators. Complying with House Bill 432, the School Athletics Equity Act, Section 23 dash 31 dash 5, New Mexico statutes annotated 1978 of the act, requires that all public schools no later than August 31st of each year, submit an assurance of compliance with Title IX to its local board or governing body for approval for schools who offer athletic programs or students participate in athletic programs within the Los Cruces Public School District. To date, Los Cruces Public Schools continues to meet Title IX compliance using federal guidelines to monitor access to higher education, athletics under Title IX, career education, education for pregnant and parenting students, employment, learning environment, math and science, sexual harassment, education, standardized testing and technology. All secondary high schools are in the process of submitting their data and uploading that to New Mexico PAD. I will review that prior to August 31st to ensure its accuracy and that all submission data has been submitted in a timely manner. At this time, I am open for questions if you have any.
Any questions from the board? So, we're approving it in advance of your review of it.
What we are doing basically, that, the, the part that is being submitted is only the athletic data portion, all the other parts have met compliance already.
And that athletic data you have?
Yes, I am currently monitoring, yes, ma'am.
Very well. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Title IX assurance for secondary schools.
Salute.
Got a mo, motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So, the motion passes.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
With that, Madam President, we'll move to the Head Start Self-Assessment Report that was completed for the 2013-2014 school year. And Dr. Artiaga, our coordinator for Head Start, is here to update you on that self-assessment.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Sanchez. What I'm going to be presenting to you very briefly, the first item, is the self-assessment report. At this point, I'm just going to be sharing it with you. And next month, we will seek approval. And for the self-assessment, it's done yearly. This past year, the 13-14 school year, we had some policy council members. We also had the Title I coordinators assist us with the self-assessment. They come and they do questions. They look at all the component areas of Head Start. Then we finalize. We look at the needs of what we need to improve on. We are still working on some of those needs, as I will share with you briefly in my next item. But at this time, we're just going to be presenting it to you. And then I will stand for questions next month.
Next month?
Yes, next month.
Oh, good.
Did you here understand she would stand for questions next month?
So you can have the opportunity to read it.
I have a question about.
Okay.
Mr. Davis has a question.
Head Start, actually. Head Start has already started?
Yes, and that's what I was going to get into.
Okay.
Next.
And did you have the menus record today?
Okay, well, actually, at the end of the month, we will present that information to you. We are still, classes begin tomorrow. And at the end of every month, we present the menus and the attendance to the governing body, to the school board. So at this point, for this meeting...
Well, it was, they got on our case for having it as a matter of record, so we just have to make sure it's brought up, so we put it in the record.
Right. We'll do that next month.
Other questions? No?
Okay. So as in...
Thank you, Dr. Artiaga. Our next, so just for clarity, we're bringing this report to you so you can read it, and we will seek your approval on it and any questions that you have at the next business meeting. Progress report on Head Start. The board at the last meeting actually asked for a progress report on the new funding that we received, and Dr. Artiaga is here to do that.
Okay, well, I'm delighted to say that on July the 7th of this year, we received the written notification of award. And we received our grant for five years. So in five years, we have to apply for the grant again, and we'll probably be in the same position. And hopefully, with all this experience that we have, it would go smoother.
Remember it.
Okay? We also, the next thing is that Hatch Valley Public Schools is no longer our delegate agency. They decided to apply for the state pre-K and service the children that way versus having the Head Start program in their community. So from those 68 slots that they had, we actually took those slots, and now we are serving 413 children at 11 of our school sites. And these schools are Booker T. Washington, Cesar Chavez, Columbia, Conley, Doña Anna, Hermosa Heights, Loma Heights, MacArthur, Messia Park, Tomba, and Valley View. And at Booker T. and Cesar Chavez, they have more than one classroom. At Booker T., we have three classrooms, two of them which are full-day servicing only four-year-old children, and the other one is serving three-year-old children. And at Cesar Chavez, we have two classrooms, one of them dedicated to four-year-old children and the other one to three-year-old children, since we provide services to three- and four-year-old children in our community. As far as Head Start is concerned, last year, the instruction department, they approved the frustrating curriculum, which comes along with the assessment. So we're providing additional training to our teachers, to our staff, so that they can be good at what they do, so that we could provide the best services to our children. The curriculum also encompasses focusing on all developmental areas, all developmental domains. Your cognitive, your fine motor, gross motor, language, social, there's a component embedded within the curriculum to ensure that our children are getting the best, high-quality services. And today, as far as the Head Start calendar, our schools held the transition meeting. During these transition meetings, the parents are invited along with their children so that they could learn about the school environment. They could get to know their teacher, their principal, other members, so that their first day, which would be tomorrow, the children would feel a little bit more safer coming and letting go of their parents. I visited one of the sites today when they were having the transition, and the children looked fine, but mom, one of the moms is the one who's saying, "I think I'm going to cry." So we have to be there to support both, not only the children, but for the parents as well. So that was touching. As far as the status of the Head Start staff, this year, we had 19 job openings in Head Start. And 16 of those openings have been filled. Seven of them were, of our teachers returned, with seven of them being new. So we have seven new teachers. And pending right now, we have one educational assistant at Booker T. Washington. The process, we're continuing with the process to hire, so that's pending. And hopefully, the end of this week, beginning of next week, we'll be interviewing for the secretary position and the education facilitator position with Head Start. And that would fill all our positions. But the teaching positions, therefore, we're moving on. Every year, Head Start also requires for the members of the school board to receive training. This training could come in many venues. They can come in updating you with booklets, with PowerPoint meetings. We're going to look at that to provide you with the best training that we can, so that when you do provide me with feedback or the Head Start program, looking at self-assessment reports, looking at all avenues of the program, so that the decisions could be made to the best of your knowledge and ability of the program itself. See, the next thing on my list is, there's two separate requirements that with this five-year grant, the Head Start programs are required to fulfill. The first one is a health and safety screener. Last year, we were proactive, and so what we did with this health and safety screener, our facilitators actually went out there and conducted the screening to make sure that our environments are safe, the indoors and outdoor environment for our children. So what we did this year as well is, we gave this checklist to the teachers, and they're going to be completing it. So when the facilitators go out there on the 26th and the 27th of August, we can identify if there's anything that needs to be taken care of immediately. And this new requirement has to be taken care of, the screener, within 45 calendar days for the first year, for the first day of the program. So since the first day is tomorrow, we have 45 days to ensure that this compliance is met. Now, from that, there's a certification of compliance that needs to be signed by the governing body, by the school board. And that has to be completed within 15 calendar days. So we're going to be providing you with an update very quickly. Okay? The last thing is Head Start governance practices and related regulations. That's another requirement that comes along with a five-year grant. And this is actually a screener to identify that the Head Start program's needs are, and that we're building to capacity, so that we could make sure, again, that all of these responsibilities are met. So we have some agendas for the policy council, others for the governing board, to make sure, again, that everybody's doing their part to ensuring that the program, again, is being strengthened. So in that plan, I identified two areas out of the whole checklist that we need to work on. We will be creating a plan. We will be providing you with the evidence. And I know that I send you monthly updates as far as that news flash newsletter, so I will be providing that information as well.
Very good.
Any questions at this time?
Board, any questions? Matt? You have fans on the school board, and we try to keep up with your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. And Dr. Artiaga, before you leave, I'd just like to commend you for your services to our children and the professionalism in which you run the Head Start program. I think you're a marvelous asset to the district, and you're certainly a blessing to all of the children that come your way. So thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Madam President, the next item on here is the Las Cruces Public Schools Professional Development Plan. This plan was provided for you in your materials. But one of the significant pieces that I'd like to point out is that you'll notice a lot of names on the cover page. And we view professional development in our district as a very collaborative venture as we move forward. Our coordinator for professional development, Dr. Thea Hand, has to kind of coordinate all of those disparate pieces into one thing that flows very, very nicely, and we appreciate her being patient with all of us. There's another thing on the third page in the professional development plan that we have looked at very, very carefully, and this was an examination of Thomas Guskey's work, on how do we effectively evaluate professional development? And I know that this has been a topic that has brought up many times by the board. Staff took that very, very seriously. And I've asked Dr. Hand to join us this evening to explain how that particular component is going to work. Dr. Hand?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Rounds. I have a handout, if that's all right. I'll bring it up.
I'll, go ahead. I'll pass them on for you.
So in the last year and a half since I was hired as the professional development coordinator, kind of the burning question in professional development always has been, you know, how do we know that they're not just coming to PD, putting the notebook on their shelf, and not doing anything with it? Because really, why do we financially support PD and offer professional development and take our time with professional development if it's not getting to the students? So we talk about it quite a lot in directors. I'd say after the first year of getting my feet on the ground, we've also talked a lot about our structures, from central office to our instructional specialists to the teachers down to the students. So the handout that you have is actually a timeline that will kind of describe a cycle that we are going to implement this year to follow up on professional development and evaluate whether or not it is effective and ensuring that it's actually getting down to the student level. So the primary pieces that we're going to be looking at with this system are the summer academy, the fall professional development that is implemented district-wide, and then the January professional development day that is also district-wide, that we really support across all of the departments out of the PDC. So as you all know, we always supply a reflection form at the end of all of our professional development currently. So that is really the only data that we've been analyzing to this point to determine whether or not the PD is effective. But really, that doesn't take us back into the classroom. So we've kind of batted around some ideas, and one of the things that we're going to do, I'm going to partner with the director of AAR, and we're going to work on a follow-up survey. So the handout that you have is really a timeline for each of these cycles, for the different PD that we deliver. Partnering with AAR, and what we'll do is first start with a follow-up survey of the teachers. How is this working? Are you implementing it into your classroom? Is there more support that you need, either from our department, our staff development specialists, or the instructional specialists in their schools? That's the first step. The second step really relies on our staff development specialist partnering program that we're starting this year. Every one of my staff members has a group of either four or six schools that are going to be their focus schools as far as just general PD support to the instructional specialist as well as the school. So they will be making weekly visits to the schools. In those weekly visits, they will do random check-ins with teachers that they know attended certain PDs. They'll have all the sign-in sheets from their schools for their PD. They'll do random check-ins with the teachers, just to stop by and say, you know, "How is it going? Is this professional development helping you? Are you implementing it in the classroom? You know, what else do you need? Did you have everything that you needed to be able to do this in your classroom?" That information will then come back to the Professional Development Center. We are actually having weekly data meetings to look at that data ourselves, to continue to, A, differentiate either for the instructional specialist or for individual schools, and then also to start to look at how we can review and revise our work to make sure that it's the highest quality PD possible, to make it as deliverable as possible to impact student learning and student achievement. The handout is really just a timeline of those processes.
Thank you. Madam President, with that, we'll stand for any questions.
Board members, you have questions or comments? Anyone but me? On this page where we have the five levels of critical information, just because I think student learning outcomes are the most important, I would appreciate it if you would move it to the top.
Sure.
That would be a simple thing. And I would like to be invited to one of your data meetings sometime later, when it starts happening with some understanding. I want to say that I'm very happy to see this professional development plan, and I'm very happy to see the emphasis moving toward what is the student product we get from the investment we're making with staff in terms of the professional development. That is why we do it.
Right.
So we can help students. So it would be nice to know what that outcome is. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'd like to compliment our coordinator, Dr. Hand, and the directors of instruction for their exceptional work on putting this professional development plan together. I think it's one of the best ones we've done since I've been here. With that, we conclude instruction, and we'll move on to C. Madam President.
And C is operations.
That is your construction projects report.
Yes.
Kenan. Madam President, members of the board, in your packet is the construction report. We're not making our presentation. It's done quarterly, and it's not, but I stand for questions. I do want to add, before we get to that point, this is a very busy summer for operations. And you may have heard me say it before, I always think of operations as, they're like a catcher on a baseball team. If we're doing our job, you don't even notice us. But then when we make a mistake, everybody notices it. But, and a few people I want to recognize, we bought an awful lot of furniture, for instance. I know this has to do with the construction report, because we had a lot of construction going on, and we were working at putting in painting as well as carpeting, as well as furniture. When you put new furniture in, you've got to take old furniture out, and there was a lot going on. And a couple of people I want to recognize that did an outstanding job with this. One, David Del Toro and his group over at Materials Management. Of course, Bobby Stoudt, who always does an outstanding job. Our custodians, and the people that oversee our custodians, Lauren Davis and Sean Barnum. And then they had to work with this furniture, putting it in and out, with Al Puentes over at purchasing. So there was a lot of coordination involved in this. Again, it kind of goes unnoticed. That means I think they did a pretty good job with it. Again, I stand for questions with the construction report.
Board members, any questions on the construction update? No? It's impressive how much work we get done.
They're good people.
Yeah.
They're good people working for the district. Makes my job easy.
Thank you.
Madam President, based on a little side conversation that you and I had a few months ago, in fact, it was in May sometime, I would like to invite you personally to visit Mayfield High School's gym to see the...
I will check whether there's...
So whenever you're ready to go, I'll, we'll go out there together.
I will do it. I will look at the rafters. Thank you.
With that, Madam President, moves you to item 6.
We're moving to item 6, board items, new business. Discussion number, it's item 2, discussion of 2015 MSBA resolutions. We are at the point where the New Mexico School Board Association asks us to submit any resolutions we might like to move forward in the state. You have in your folder a copy of last year's resolutions and some proposed resolutions for this year. So if you go to your folder, you have two items in there. One has 2014 on it, and one has 2015 on it.
Madam President, if we've made the, we sort of vetted your resolutions to those that we thought would have significance, coming off of last year. And then Mr. Davis requested, in a meeting with me, the additional resolutions that are under the 2015. We've prepared those as thought pieces for the board to consider.
And we have a timeline on this activity?
And I believe, Mr. Davis, Madam Chair, I've... And I believe, Mr. Davis, Madam Chair, I believe you can act on it as late as your first September meeting, before you would submit it, is that right, Tina? So, you have some time to look at these. So, these are thought starters. Dr. Sanchez, myself would be happy to meet with any member of the board to review these or look at tweaks that you may wish, or other resolutions you might have. But these are, we believe, very thoughtful. I wanna thank Dr. Sanchez for his amazing writing. Again, he's a much better draft person than I am. I have the ideas, he does the writing, it's kinda cool.
So, board, how would you like to move forward on these resolutions? Do you want to look at them at a work session? Do you want to look at them in solitude and then discuss them? How would you like to work on them?
I'm sure.
Yes. Mr. Davis?
I would propose that we look at them, and then we go into the work session and discuss them.
Okay. Move that forward to.
As long as we meet the September criteria. Which puts it what?
So, Tina, the September is what, again?
We have a September work session that will be, the only part of September 2nd, the early post-September.
Yes.
The regular board meeting will be September 16th.
And the due date, Tina?
September 17th.
So, we could go to the regular meeting to adopt with the work session, and the regular meeting in which to contemplate.
So, this will be an agenda item for September 2nd?
For September 2nd, yes.
And then again?
And then again on the 16th, would be my recommendation.
Okay, very well.
Mad, Madam President, if I could, since it relates to an earlier discussion that we had under the personnel, there is a, a resolution that Mr. Rounds and Dr. Marufo requested, and that is requesting that the New Mexico legislator, legislature revise conditions for teachers who have retired to return to work to fill needed teaching vacancies as determined by the local education agency on an emergency basis. And that is the resolution that I referred to when Dr. Marufo was giving her report.
Madam President, we'd like to send that to members of the board, and you may have talked about it.
Is it among our stack?
It is in your.
It is in your stacks, if you would review that. The issue is this, we're having grave difficulties, you heard in the report, in securing teachers for our classes, and a way to get there, because our teacher colleges are not turning out the numbers. Whereas, we went to UNM, there were twenty-some-odd only graduates. As we went to MSU, there were thirty-something of those graduates, is all?
Ninety.
Ninety, oh, ninety. And, and the issue is, it's much fewer than we've had in the past. So, our ability to hire new teachers is diminishing significantly. So, the pool that is available are those who are retirees, but the retirement law doesn't allow us to move as agilely as we might, and we think this might be a beneficial notion for the school boards to take on as we deal with that tactical need. I've talked to Superintendent Hobbs, Carlsbad, some assistant superintendents in Albuquerque, and upstate, and Farmington, we're all in the same conundrum, so this might have some
Senator Flores?
Looking over these resolutions, there's one regarding the three-tier salary structure for counselors, social workers, and school nurses. There are two other positions that are sort of left out in limbo. Those are the SLPs and the diagnostician. And it's my understanding that they're kind of like, they haven't, they don't have a three-tier system either, right?
And Madam President, we'd certainly seek the guidance of the board. We didn't, we may have inadvertently, we didn't maybe not make the entire list, we didn't inadvertently leave them. Many of those positions are, are contractors to us, rather than employees. That's why we don't necessarily always go there, but I have no difficulty in that. We're trying to sweep all of those professionals who were left out of the, the statutory writing of when they did the three-tier system, and wrap them into consideration to correct that.
Right. And so, that's what I'm proposing, is to perhaps add the SLPs and the diagnosticians, so that there is no one left unattended at this point, because that was brought to my attention this summer, I didn't even know about this.
Madam Chair, and, and Ms. Flores, I, I think that's a wonderful addition to the consideration. It's our intent.
That's my only comment, and I have to read the rest of them.
Madam President, I, I would suggest, if there are any comments, that you forward those to Leslie Cervantes in the superintendent's office, and she will get the information to Mr. Rounds, so he can make the adjustments on the resolutions, or write new ones that you might come up.
If there are new ones you'd like to throw to contemplate.
Thank you.
Very good. We're moving to new business under Roman numeral six, board items. Number three, first reading of policy JLC Student Health Services.
Madam President, this policy is being submitted to you. It was last approved in 2006. The policy basically brings us into compliance with present practices as required by state statute, and the health, the health nursing, the, the Nursing Association.
The School Nurse Association.
And I'm sorry, Ellen, Ellen's here, she was in the other room with me a minute ago. Would you straight Dr. Sanchez out, please?
It's, it's long, and I've gotten tired.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Rounds, we just needed to identify the associations that we're currently involved with, NMSNA, NASN, and we're aligning a lot of what we do with their recommendations, and so we felt like the policy needed to be updated.
Could you tell the board what NMSA stands for?
New Mexico School Nurse Association.
That's what I was trying to think of.
NASN is the National Association of School Nurses.
Very, very good.
With that, Madam President, we stand for any questions.
Board members, any questions, comments on this? I had one, if no one else does, it was a question. I wonder where, under the position, it seems to gather together the component parts of the nursing program, but I do wonder if the health curriculum component, if there is a, a relationship that needs to be explicit? And I don't know the answer to that, but I do wonder, and it's not there if it is supposed to be.
Right. Health services is as separate than the curriculum that is in the classrooms. We support that, and we also have contacts that we can support the teachers when they have questions. We're also willing to give them classroom, bring in special speakers, special programs. We're currently looking at bringing in the Heart Start program to help the teachers teach that, learn how to teach that. So, we're, we're, we're a resource for them, but we are not part of developing the curriculum.
Okay.
And Madam President, just to add to that, we do have a separate regulation, policy and regulation that addresses the health curriculum separately, but what I think your concern is, is that we should probably put a reference to that curriculum as a resource and a support for the delivery of that curriculum through health services. And, and I think that's actually a good suggestion. We'll adjust that for second reading.
Is that right?
That would be good, thank you. Board member reports, Roman numeral seven, board members, anyone on a committee, or any activities you'd like to speak with us about? The finance committee meet?
Yes, we met, and we had a big discussion, didn't we, Mr. Dean?
He's gone.
But actually, it was very much off the record, so. I, I had a lot of questions, and he always is, does a good job of answering them. I don't have anything else to say. I haven't been to any schools, I'm gonna start probably this week at Hillrise, and I'm sorry I missed the bus tour, but I will make up for it. The other thing is, as Dr. Vota was sending this article to us, "Teaching is Not a Business", I had already read it and highlighted, and so, I just, I know that everyone works so hard on, on, on data, on, on working together, as you said, Mr. Martinez, of all moving forward, of all being on the same page, and I think that's crucial. But you can't eliminate the human aspect that, that they talk about in this, in this article. Kids need a champion, they need someone to look out for them, it is the teacher that does it. And so, all I ask, or all that, I don't ask it, but I know that the teachers are actually doing that every day in the classroom, and I commend them for it, because they're, they're our champions, and they may, and then the kids are their champions. So, we could not do the work that we do without them. And just, there is, and I'm just quoting the article, there is no substitute for the personal element, and just that hands-on, that, that person being in the classroom day in and day out, on good days and bad days, like today on that field. If it weren't for our teachers, where would we be? So, I just wish you the best of luck this year on, on everything that the teachers are out there doing. Thank you.
Ms. Hall, you have anything to talk about?
Well, besides seeing all the good things we saw yesterday on the bus tour, which were wonderful things to see, and wonderful changes, not just physical, but we saw lots of teachers teaching. I did get to Fair Acres, I have student teachers there, and saw new furniture there. Kathy Norris said, "It was the first time they'd had new furniture since they opened the school, and it's beautiful, it looks great." And they're very pleased to see it. The Foundation meets, board, that meets next Monday, or we're actually having a, a retreat on Monday, so I'll report to you after that, about the foundation.
Okay. Dr. Phillips?
I don't have any reports this evening.
Mr. Davis? Well, school is starting, and we saw lots of teaching going on yesterday, didn't we? It looked like everybody hit the ground running, so that was wonderful. Upcoming events, there is a list in your folder for you to put on your calendar. I don't suppose, I think they're all pretty straightforward, there's nothing deviant about it, so you can do that. I think we're ready to adjourn.
Madam Chair, before you adjourn, can I just want, take one point of personal privilege? So, over the last week, we watched some things happen in Albuquerque. We had an event tonight, or this afternoon late, that was significant in kids and people's lives. And I'm always reminded of the work this board does, your concern for kids, your support of what we do that's right, and I wanna thank you for that. I don't think you're often recognized like you need to be, so bravo for you. Thank you.
Thank you, and I want to express my appreciation that you were at the hospital with those kids and their parents when they needed you to be there, instead of here. That was a good thing for you to do.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right?
I'm regent.
Motion and second, all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.